With the, and that's with the consortium, they continue to raise pricing. I'm on the executive order of the consortium and try to fight them from continually raising prices. Some of the lower plans are still, everybody's going up eighteen percent. And they're feeding uh reserve accounts and not necessarily doing it. We're just trying to advocate hard to get them to stop. They continue to take on more people into their program, more municipalities into their program. And they're not as good a rating or healthier rating as some of us are, which is driving those costs. So it's forcing um a lot of people out of some of the consortium itself that are some of the better takers like us. And the classic blue is there's only three municipalities left that have it. And Tonkens County is actually pulling out of the classic blue as we speak as well, doing a similar idea of the same idea that going to the bronze plan, which is the same with the higher deductible. So in order to, you know, uh since again, since I've been an officer, but our budget's gone up about two million dollars. We made a lot of improvements. Um I'd like to say with excitement, we uh not public information yet, but we received another million dollars for another fire truck today. Which is good, so that'll be the third one wherever to get a grant for, which is all great and we're able to do that. We made a lot of cuts during our time. We kept things physically responsible as best we could. But we we've gone up two million dollars. Two point eight million dollars is actually what it's cost us in our healthcare increases and our retirement costs for paying for the state. And by any means, do we not recognize and respect everybody in this room for their time working for us in the city? Or the ones that are currently working for the city either. So in an effort to try to look at things in a reasonable rational manner, trying to come up with a health insurance plan that does not hurt anybody, but can save money. The best solution we can, and it gets a little bit complicated, but I'm gonna try to go through the best I can so everybody can understand it. For everybody that is in the bronze, bronze plan or the blue plan would go to the bronze plan was a, which has a higher deductible. Seven thousand individual and fourteen thousand per family. With that, um they would get, they would be able to get a card that would have on that card that seven and fourteen thousand to pay their deductibles. So where their co-pays would be less on uh employees that are active or retirees under sixty-five would have that benefit to have. And um there are three items that are uh listed. Do you have that resolution that I can read back home?
Yeah.
There are three items that are uh a little slightly different on the bronze to the blue. Uh that are in there. Everything else, kind of everything else matters side by side to what that probably you see. Again, that's why we had the uh other. Yeah, thank you. That's why we had the other um uh other unions review it and everybody else to go through it to make sure there wasn't anything, but we knew these going off. It kept, the classic blue allows for three hundred sixty-five days in a calendar year for rehab facility, while the bronze plan provides two hundred days. Uh and M H I C has informed us this, that they have never had a claim reach forty-five days in calendar year. And again, I wanna go to the extremes of everybody else, you know, and to make sure to be conservative to say, alright, if that maximum does go to that three sixty-five, how can we cover that? So that would be covered under the resolution that I would suggest that we would do uh that would cover anything outside of that limit. The other item that doesn't, one of the other items that doesn't cover is allows undefined number of O T and P T visits in a year, and the bronze plan allows sixty-five O Ts and P Ts per year. Again, from the experts we have said sixty-five is plenty and don't like to have that, but again, never know, wanna make sure it's covered. That would be covered in a, in a resolution uh statement at the bottom. I'll go through those wording in a minute. And then this classic blue still allows for private duty nurses while the uh while an inpatient setting, while the bronze plan does not provide for that D N. Uh and because of shortages and changes, uh it's not likely to happen again, it's rarely to happen according to the experts, but again, by the last clause of the resolution that I put in, that in the event any service procedure or device would have been covered under the classic blue is not covered by the bronze plan, M S three plan, or the plan four of the city shall pay the full expense of set and covers service procedure or device. Cause again, the, you know, the, I, those are the, those are the three that were identified by the experts. And again, to cover anything else that might be outside of that, that was the best solution I could come up with. But that language is simple, as clean as what it is, needs to be cleaner, anybody can make those recommendations. But the concerns are when, you know, we're trying to combat and try to educate and and I understand this is a highly emotional thing, any kind of health insurance. And it's easier to do a change, especially if you have a, some of our employees have nine percent, some are, we're up to twenty percent now in our current employees. But some of them eight, nine percent, I think there's even eight, there's some eights, but you know, when you took it, when you're talking eight percent and you're only, you're looking at a forty dollar increase as opposed to an eighty, I, you wanna go to the safe version of going with the blue or something that's guaranteed to be covered, but if we're covering the same in the bronze plan and it cracks us over a three million dollar nut, three point five million dollar nut, then I think that's something to really consider, to really have that and to, to have that understanding. Um I know there's been a lot of cause and confusion on the retirees and so there's currently there's an M S three plan that we had offered last year. And uh we took sixteen percent of our um well, uh retirees did take the uh M S three plan and uh we're completely happy within some, we're willing to even talk about it, but we did send a survey out. Did get a response from every one of those surveys and none of them had any trouble. One did mention that they handed in their old insurance card, but that was the only time they had an issue at the beginning. But they, they got rid of that one and used their other card and they never had an issue since. Um and again, not saying that you get a bigger pool, there could be an issue and be a problem either, because it, there is no guarantees in anything, especially nowadays. As we all know, this is a federal level problem that we're all having as well, and it's, it's something that needs to be grappled with. But we also need to respond and react for our, our own constituency as well. I mean, we have um a constituency that would be looking at, you know, a thirty plus increase, you know, five hundred eighty dollar increase if, if we don't take action on our health insurance alone. And I'm not trying to put it on the backs, it's been quoted, put it on the backs of retirees, that's not the case. I would not do that. I went to dinner with my wife on Friday to Dryden Hotel, you know, sometimes it's good to get out of town, just to get the privacy, and I saw four retirees in that Dryden Hotel that night. And I, you know, I would never want to ever harm them and have them wanna uh poison my food if I went to the bathroom or throw things at me. So certainly, tho- those are all considerations a hundred percent that I know that's endeared to me and I would not challenge anybody on this board or anybody else to not wanna be that, to do that, but if we can, if there's a way to make, it is a complicated problem and a complicated solutions. But if there's a way to make it work, that everybody is gets the same benefit as what they weren't, so that so now we're going on to a little bit more of the complicated area, the M S three and the uh plan four plan. They're both offered by Blue Cross. The M S three plan is a little bit less complicated and more, it's, it's actually considered the uh Medicare Advantage Plan for the blue.
Supplemental.
Supplemental for the, sorry, right, supplemental for the blue plan, thank you for correcting me, for, for the blue. For what, so it is the difference, what Medicare does not cover and what the blue, what the blue does. So it's no different than that. The only difference is your Medicare uh would hit eighty percent of it and your twenty percent. Those are rough numbers and not, not that he quoted, but eighty percent of your Medicare is gonna hit that anyways. And then after that, anything outside of that, the supplemental will pick it up just as if it was your blue plan. Um and that's what we've experienced with the past people in M S three. The plan four was, four was a little bit richer. Uh there are some concerns with that as far as, you know, the, I mean, even in the blue plan, you have to get pre-authorization for certain items. So I know we've had some, that had some neck surgery and some different uh technology that's down there and they have to get that pre-approval, just as anyone. So all those agencies have that, but it's some of the long approval waiting and again, uh the internet can be our best friend and our worst friend. Some of those expanding circumstances have been a concern, but in the plan four, the reason why with that is because the co-pays are zero one one. The uh are, and for your med, medic, for medicine, and then also there's um dental, which we've never really been able to offer, and vision, which we've never been able to offer employees very well all along, and hearing aid uh increased cost that are above and better, and it's less cost. So those retiring dollars that people have worked hard to put away and uh to put away would be able to go a lot farther and be able to have that, uh be able to have better coverage to do that. And again, all the contract language that said was to uh, what was always to be equal to a veteran, if that wasn't the case, we feel it's equal to a veteran, we certainly entertain any discussions that where that falls short of the, you know, we brought up the items that we're aware of, to be able to do that. So it would be important that the resolves would be that the eligible retired Medicare enrolled individuals who are currently enrolled on either classic blue or M S three for twenty twenty-five plan year shall be transferred to the spanny plan for twenty twenty-six year or, or uh provided the period to opt into the M S three plan. That all enrollees will become eligible shall be transferred to plan four unless notifying the city of intent to opt in to M S three plan prior to eligibility to plan three and the bronze upon eligibility. That all active employees or retirees enrolled in the classic blue or flatland plan for the twenty twenty-five plan year shall be transferred to the bronze plan per said year. That all active employees and retirees being transferred to the bronze plan, the city shall fully fund the H R A covering in-network, out-of-pocket maximums and out-of-network out-of-maximum uh out-of-pocket maximums. That said, H R A shall only be used for expenses attributed to the inner and outward network pocket premiums and in the event that any services, procedures or devices would have been covered under the classic blue or not covered under the bronze plan, M S three plan or plan four, the city shall pay full expenses of said uncovered services and procedures and invites. So um you know, I would submit that as a resolution, we'll pass that out to everybody to review. I wouldn't, it's nothing we're gonna adopt. But you review it, go through it, see if there's any other concerns or questions that that might be outside that we can talk about that would make it uh more uh palatable and easy to understand, or it's easy to make sure that everybody would know that we would do anything and everything outside of our realm to make sure everybody was taking care of income. Um so that, that was kind of the four one one of what's going on. We can, we can talk, we, there's been education uh seminars that's been going on all last week and this week. Um there's reported video, there's frequently asked questions on the website. We've taken from those to help answer some of those questions and concerns. I don't know if we have any other ones or anybody else has received any others, but certainly we're open to those to try to help alleviate any questions or concerns that might be there. But again, I, it's difficult to uh not recognize that, you know, everybody's on a fixed income once you retire especially. And um whether you're under sixty-five or over sixty-five, it, all that has, needs to be planned on. I do have a list of employees and what their savings would be, and there's nobody that doesn't get a significant savings and some would be even more when you talk about out-of-pocket expenses and co-pays that you would have had to pay prior to. And those are in no way a consolation to given an inferior product. So I think that's an important factor to put into, so. And again, you know, I wholeheartedly, you know, um I apologize for all and any all the angst that people get from those, but I think being able to um work through the common resolve to help absorb and help with this hurdle that we're all facing together is really what I'm asking, what is the big asset. So at that point, I open it, any questions that council members might have?
Could you explain how bonding the resolution would be and what the process would be to alter it in the future?
Um again, I think the, the resolution would be, I mean, Randall can answer this, but the resolution would be bonded to this document. Once, once it's implemented, then it has to be equal to or better than. So that I think that itself would stand to it, stand to that test. And if this was, had to be modified, there was another, there was another document that was done um um seventies, I think so, through seventy-three, thanks. And that was challenged and that was upheld too, when they went back to try to challenge that. So that case was won, and I know that's part of the, some of the past case, the history that there's not a lot of trust necessarily in what the city does, we doesn't do. Um but so I guess, you know, and again, I, that's one guarantee I can't give is what the predecessors will do. But again, I, I can't imagine that they wouldn't have the same respect for everybody else to do it, but to take away the seven thousand, I know this has been a conversation I've had with a couple, they're concerned about them taking away the seven thousand or fourteen thousand, then it's, it's less than what you have. That's an easy, to me, that's an easy case, uh would be an easy case to do it. Again, I'm no lawyer. In fact, to me, is basic. Now you're asking them to pay more, which, you know, realistically, they should only have to pay thirty-eight percent or ten percent or twenty percent of that. But you wanna build this to me, to answer your question.
Yes. My stance is just that it's voluntary, it's always been voluntary and we keep it that way and uh that's just what the retirees want, is it to be voluntary. I mean, you said that I, many times that it would be voluntary, that you wouldn't chant, that you said that actually three weeks ago.
Yeah, and there's, they have that between the M S three and the plan four. You know, that, that was all the, the two different plans to be able to cover that blue, could be covered in that blue to do that. But the, 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 the classic blue is going away. We know that's going away.
I've talked to the concern, it's not going to, it'll still be there. It'll still be there as long as somebody on the city wants.
Right. I would always want to keep paying the high price and all key increases.
That's something that was contractual between retirees and the city. So.
Not specific to the blue plan.
Uh, I think so.
No, equal to or better than.
Okay. And a resolution can change that inside, just set that. Tomorrow, you said that a couple weeks ago, like tomorrow that resolution can change, this can change, it's not ironed flat.
Okay, and I, again, I would accept that challenge and for, I mean, if you're gonna take away equal to or better than, it would be no different. If this wasn't equal to or better than, then it makes sense. Doesn't have to be the exact same norm, right?
We just, all this, what's been caused over the years, it's been a lot of problems for people. We go through this every six months.
Well, it's, it can, we went from one point five million to three point five million, Billy, in two years, three, since we talked about.
Like, like somebody's been telling, retirees been telling, you're taking out of that, so retirees?
I, I am agreeing with that because I'm not hurting anybody.
Like you said, your predecessors, they change things.
I, again, I can't argue that, Billy, and this is a prob- possibility. I kind of don't know why they would, but it's a probability and a possibility, but the predecessors could change this anyways. I mean, I, I, again, I would, I, I'm doing another hospice that you know is not hurting anybody and is not the impact of anybody, but if we don't do it, the impact of that is a big cry. It's a big cry to people on fixed incomes. You know, I had to help somebody yesterday that was, you know, not in the city, but you know, they, they don't have, they're not getting their heat. They, you know, with bottom pellets to try to get them heat to their house. I mean, this is, this is real for people that are really, you know, they're making decisions to take their medicine or pay their doctor bills or, or pay for their medicine or pay for their heat. And those are causing other problems that are substantiating, and if I truly believed in any sense of the way that this was on any of the fact, but to me, it's a, a fair it's not, it's a, it's a better than fair resolution. It's giving a better, a lower price. Giving better coverage to what they have right now. I, I don't, I, I get that, that they're, they're in love with that color blue and that, that's Diane blue, but I, I get that, and I get they cause anxiety, but I also get that um we, we have to think about everybody as well, and then not discounting them. Put anybody in front of anybody. If this can be, everybody can win out of this, this complicated situation, that makes the most sense to me. There's some. Yeah.
Um, yes, sir. Rick and I attended one of the informational meetings on the plan plan four. And we, we were the only two there besides Beth and when, correct me if I'm wrong, when you left, you felt pretty good about plan four. What changed your mind? Because its mind has been changed now. Explain what changed.
What changed my mind is research on advantage plans in general. Advantage plans replace Medicare. We were told in that meeting that no, that's not the case. Well, that's a false statement.
Can I speak on this? Because that is actually, I, I would challenge the research, quite frankly. I, I wanna make sure we're getting the correct information out, because if you Google Medicare Advantage Plans, what you're reading about is what is offered to individuals who can buy it themselves on the marketplace. What this specific plan is, and I, I just, I'll say this and then I just wanna make sure it's the correct information, because I've heard this a lot and I've had a lot of calls about this. This is a Medicare Advantage with prescription drugs P P O plan. It is an advantage plan, but it is one that can only be purchased through an employer, a municipal employer. It is not at all the same as a Medicare Advantage Plan that you get advertised on television or you get flyers out or any of those things. It is completely different. And that is something that both Kevin and Brian, who came from Excelsior, explained and, and I, I would like for people to truly read the E O C documents and the actual plan documents and understand the plan itself and not just Google Medicare Advantage Plan, because you do not get the same, same information, and that is my concern. I want people to have the correct information.
Agreed. And I think, I think there is your question, there is.
Can I just, as long as we got microphones, can we, we're older people, can you use the microphones so people can hear us?
Yeah. So uh and there, and Rick, there, there is a concern with Medicare uh Advantage Plans, why? Because, and again, they all get lumped in with everyone's bad. Okay, so we've gone through this, everyone's bad, and if you look up Aetna, or you look up the other ones, we've been through all that, that it, it could blast, because Aetna makes a, uh, it's like John Deere makes a tractor that they sell at Lowe's, and John Deere makes a tractor that's, they're different quality, it's still a John Deere, but it's different quality to do that. So I think the Medicare Advantage Plans, and that is some of the concern that people have is that they've been there's been so many of them bad, that some doctors are like, I'm done with this, I'm not dealing. If it's an advantage plan, just that word, and that's why she corrected me when I said that word, because that's like a swear word, because there are some bad ones and there are some legit ones, and that's the problem, and they're all, and that could happen, and that's why we offer the M S four is that could happen, you could, your doctor could say, I don't necessarily take that, and then it, it could be resolved pretty easily once they get that to you. But some people are just stubborn and wouldn't do it, but again, this, you know, uh others have not had that issue, but it's been for quite a while, and quite a few other municipalities use it and we did our research on that. So that's, that's a valid concern and not in that sense.
So Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, when we were in that meeting, we were told by the representative from uh Blue Cross Blue Shield, Excelsior for this plan, that we would take our red, white and blue Medicare card and put it in a safe at home. Because we wouldn't need that anymore. We would give them this new document and my research has shown that that new document is a contract carrier that is taking over our Medicare program and dealing with that. Medicare is gone for us. We turn to an advantage plan and there's a lot of minuses and you can say anything you want, whether it's an employee-based plan or a, a employer-based plan or a private Medicare. I know the private Medicare Advantage Plans are crap. We showed that with the uh, at a couple of years ago, he threw at us. Now we're into another program, okay, so it's got the classic blue label. I know for a fact, some of our retirees have already checked and their carriers out of network in other states will not accept it. Even the blue plan, doesn't matter who sponsors it, it won't be accepted.
Then they go with M S three.
Okay.
I said, well, it's twice as much, but they go with M S three. I mean, so I um, I mean, but I, I, again, I, I know I know the network's strong here, but I, and I know it's strong in that area, but again, I, I can't get to every one of those scenarios, but in that case, in that case, it would, and that would have been covered under blue, it's our responsibility. And, and I mean, I, I, to me, it's not a, no questions asked. I mean, that's, it seems pretty simple to me. But I mean, because uh, and you know, again, history's not gonna be the same, I get it. Yeah, we're gonna be, we'll short-term forget what you're up against.
I know it seems simple and they certainly do a great job selling a program, but let's face it, that's their job. That's what they're supposed to be doing. That's her job, is to represent the city and try to make it so that we'll accept it. Um and.
And our job is to try to make it right and try to do the best we can, make the best decision that benefit, that's the best benefit for all. Right? And that's, that's all, that's all we're trying to put forward is to be able to have that happen. Again, um you know, again, I would, I would love to, you know, there's the sixteen people that, that went off and did it and had great success. I mean, and that's a, you know, um that's sixty percent of the retiree basis. I mean, that's a pretty good pooling um to, to do that.
So in meetings that we had, this other plan was never even discussed.
M S three, we've been around, that's.
The only thing that was discussed is bronze and advantage. I did not hear anything about any M S three plans.
Those are the two new ones, we're educating on the two new ones. We didn't bring up any, any of the other, we can't, I mean, we certainly.
But if you're changing carriers, if you're going to Spanny instead of Topkins Consortium, then we need to hear their products, not just what.
The consortium is the M S three, the M S three is a consortium.
So then, are you saying this man who doesn't offer this M S three? Cause I thought the way I was.
It does.
Absolutely not.
It's all the consortium.
We did the M S three education last year for everybody. We did those sessions uh over at the county. I don't, a number of people came to those last year. So we, and we've had twenty-five, forty people, I think it was sixteen percent was twenty-four different people switch over and they've been happy with it. And this year, the additional offerings that the city was looking at was the bronze plan and the plan four, and that's why we did the education this year on those two new plans.
We do it, whatever, whatever's needed, whatever helps to get that answer out. Again, we'll put, put back, we'll do the same training and education that needs to be, to get a full understanding.
We're in a tough situation, Tim, where you agree with it. First of all, Beth does represent the city, but she's not out here to screw you, that or anyone. We have a tough situation here. And then Louis, they're doing a great job. There's a lot of, you know, I don't understand, you know, my wife sells. It's confusing. It's just, we got, there's a lot of education that gotta be done. And you talk to somebody, you're gonna get a different answer. They'll talk to somebody, it just, there's a lot to take in. But December fifteenth is looming. I know, that's the problem, it's coming quick. Wish we had more time and.
I always feel we need, what, what's needed, what will make it feel more comfortable, I know not changing it, but I get that, I get that.
You know, I think the first thing is, is what I suggested to you a couple of weeks ago. Can we stall this off until we've had more time to analyze it, not have that December fifteenth deadline? Push it off to the mid-year. By the way, we found out that that is possible. This open enrollment date for employee-based plans or employer-based plans is uh as an option to uh go into that at a later time, not wait until the next year. Okay, I believe it's June, or maybe even before that. I don't have those answers specifically, but it is an option. I know with an individual, my wife sells, you're right, the, the, the deadline's a deadline, but that's different than probably, I don't know. That's what I understand right there, maybe there is a way to.
We can't, because of our budget cycle, we can't do that.
No, later.
So here we are with thirty days, so, yeah, you know.
It's not gonna be easier to three, thirty or three hundred, it's not gonna be any easier, honestly. I mean, it's a tough, it's a, I, it's a big scare, it's a big ask, but after I, I think I'm thirty, that time of using it, if anybody's harmed, then let's go. I mean, a hundred percent.
And I'll think any of us here wanna make any of you guys feel that we don't wanna take care of you by any means. We're not doing this to take something from you. You know, I, I'm not, I mean, I'm certainly speaking, you know, Billy, we don't wanna take any of you guys, you were promised it, but we gotta have the right answers to give you what you need and what we promised you, that also protect the city. But I guarantee you that we're not gonna make a decision tonight, and we're certainly don't wanna take anything from you. Is there, is there board workshops that you would like to see on this topic? Can I see the hands of everybody that attended the workshops that were just offered?
We had good attendance, a lot of people did come.
Were you able to ask, ask your questions and get you, get your answers that you were looking for? We asked questions, we didn't get the answers always.
Yeah.
So.
What question wasn't answered? I asked people if they had questions to get them to me and I'd get them answers.
I asked about uh if they changed their formulas, which is advantage plan, they control the formulary, it's not Medicare. And I had a situation where my father, um he was on a medication he needed for several years, and then they changed the formulary and I had to appeal it. I asked, am I gonna have to appeal it or are you gonna appeal it? And I said, in the meantime, I was paying out of pocket a hundred dollars a day for one pill for a month. I said, three thousand dollars out of my pocket.
I said, three thousand dollars out of my pocket. I said, when I won the appeal, I was reimbursed by the insurance company. I said, are you gonna reimburse me, Kevin? He said he didn't think so. I asked you if you were gonna reimburse me, and you didn't think.
And I said that there was gonna be a resolution that council was gonna consider to take care of everybody and hold them harmless.
So yes, all that answers your question.
And Rick, Rick was absolutely right. Kevin did say his plan, this advantage plan kicked you off of Medicare. Because I specifically asked him, I said, so social security is gonna take. He said, you get kicked out of Medicare. I said, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna pay two hundred dollars a month, using his number, it was like two oh eight or something. I said, but essentially, two hundred dollars a month, social security is gonna take out for my Medicare. Yep, I said, then I gotta pay your, your premium. Yep, I said, then when my wife turns to social security or Medicare, they're gonna take two hundred out of her every month. Plus we have companions, but yeah, we don't have Medicare. He goes, yeah, you're right.
Right, this is, he, he doesn't quite have a brain, but if you listen to the recording, it's a little bit different than that. So that this does is because it's a, it's a Medicare Advantage. It's a Medicare Advantage Prescription Drug PPO, so it takes parts A and B of Medicare. And the part D, it wraps them together with the PPO. So there's an agreement between the PPO and Medicare, that Medicare then pays partially or into the PPO. Which is how they're able to keep the premiums so low. And that's how the, the claims actually go to Exelis, but Medicare partially supplements them, and that's how they're paid. It has more to do with how claims are paid. It's not kicking anyone off Medicare. You have to be in a member of Medicare Parts A and B in order to even be eligible for this PPO. So you are not, in fact, kicked off of Medicare. It's just that this then takes the different parts of Medicare, the A, the B. It pulls in the D, and it becomes the C to hold everything together, and it takes care of the actual processing of the claims. So it's not kicking anybody off of anything. They have to be on it in order to be eligible for them, yeah.
Yeah, cuz I, I, you can't get out of Medicare to pay a fine. So, uh, we'll, I, I'll clarify that, to understand that language exactly, it doesn't, maybe he's trying to simplify something to say. This is the only card you have, you'll have to put Medicare, like, cuz on these, not supplement amounts, that's right, where do you? As I do the supplement amount, you would have that second card, Medicare card, and a supplement. He might be trying to simplify to say, well, you just have.
And that's what he said, he said, you only need the one PPO card, because the other one is.
That's what a PPO is.
Within side of it.
So, um.
It's not traditional Medicare. I mean, just to clarify.
Correct.
It's not traditional Medicare, it's Medicare Advantage.
Yeah.
Which is what we.
It is, it's Medicare Advantage, and again, that's not comfortable, and you have to PS three, which.
Which is traditional Medicare.
Yes, with a supplement.
So I know we weren't supposed to have dialogue in this meeting.
No, no.
I appreciate the fact that we are, but my last question is, is can somebody explain this letter that we received?
Yeah, I did get a copy of that today, and this, yeah, it's the same one, like there's scheduled time on the bottom of it. Again, I, I, I think the letter might have been out before conversations. I don't know that was necessarily clear from our payroll and benefits manager, what was sent. I didn't preview this, I don't know who.
I, I just told her to check the dates and send people the information on the dates.
I was trying to get out, and I know the post office was a week delayed, but now, people didn't even get it till after, we got those phone calls too, so again.
Some people didn't get it.
Yeah, so again, I, I don't, I would love to have everybody's email and contact information in this room. And text messages, whatever's easiest way to get ahold of people. I can't believe we don't have that already. But that's something we really don't have a good way to communicate with everybody. We have retirees, it's difficult, we get ahold of them around this thing.
I haven't received mine very, doesn't it, probably, what are you talking about?
So he probably didn't get it. And, and I'm not picking on our post office, but we've, we've had a lot of trouble with that.
We get our bills every month.
That's true, this was with it, right?
It's just when it was with the bill.
Yeah, people we know that didn't even get the letter.
Or a bill.
One's the next to.
Or a bill.
They get the bill.
Cuz it was in.
The whole letter in with the bill.
Where this letter would upset people.
Nothing confusing about it, it's pretty clear.
Understood, I get it, I get the point, I don't wanna, I, it can, I, like, I'm answering what, where we are, and what, what's going on. Again, I can understand when you get fired up, again, I apologize for that. I did not know that, that it went out, it was previewed, I go, well, I know the date we're supposed to go out, I did not look at the letter. I'll take full responsibility for that going out, but we're clearing, I'm hoping we get it clarified tonight, cuz it doesn't really talk about. The MS three plan, right?
So, the last meeting that we had, remember, we had made time to the meeting, and I said, please announce it, announce it. Everybody watches the Zoom.
Right, we talked about, but again, we have no retirees, aren't gonna sit down and watch a meeting. Yeah.
We've got so many questions. It sounds like we're rushing ahead with this coming. Why can't it be, why can't we slow down, work on it after the first of the year? My other part, how many departments in the city unions have signed on to this plan now? We know the PBA did. But what about the fire, the DPW, all these other ag, uh, unions?
Yeah, I mean, that's not the retirements, what we're talking about, obviously, but it's for the, uh, for the bronze. And, you know, they've all been given their notice and discussed, and either agreed to it, um. You know, none of the contracts are ratified yet, so we, I have to somewhat be careful, but they've all, they've all had their professionals look at it and review it. And I would say in general terms, Randall, just wanna make sure that, as he was in the room, I wasn't in the room, but in general, everybody's good for it. They're fine with the bronze plan.
The only exception is wastewater, where we haven't had a comment from Teamsters yet.
So wastewater, now with Teamsters, we have not got Teamsters to represent those eight or nine people. That we can't get response from them to even need of us, so, uh, so other than that, all the other unions have been, are agreed to do it.
But a very positive response from the employees themselves, right?
So. People working in the DPW, other than management, have agreed to go into this, uh. Either the senior citizen, right, and the four, or the bronze. And that's a couple hundred employees.
DPW?
No, the whole city workforce.
Yes.
And again, why are we in such a rush? Why can't we work on this? And start to have a clean start after the first of the year? This was dropped on us.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, I think it's a good question, but round numbers, I'm gonna just throw this off the top of my head, I'm probably wrong, two hundred fifty thousand dollars a month, then? Is what we're talking about? So, um, and, um. I, I don't, you know, that, that's, that's a pretty big, like I said, it's a pretty big ask, we haven't, uh. To, to do that, I mean, that's gonna change how we have to do our direction to anything, and I, and then what timeline would you look at? Realist, I'm not trying to be facetious here, but like realistically, you know, if we pushed it till June, now we're talking, one point seven million dollars. That, you know, we have to do to try to really discuss where that's gonna go, and realistically, um. You know, um, what, 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 what are the, what are the, what are the concern, what are the issues? That we can't get resolved and get those answers to now? Me sitting on it for six months, I don't know that's gonna help anybody, that's more than take a decision.
Well, to you, if, like, what you're saying is all the, uh, current employees. Like this plan are willing to take it, that's gotta be a significant savings to the city, far more than it is for the retirees.
It's actually not, it's not, there's a lot more retirees, we're on that path, we're on the other side of the coin, where there's more of you. And it's, and it, and as we look into the future, chief, you know, the, the, well, I recruit you, hired, we're all young. I mean, one of them, we had to wait till he's twenty-one to give, to give him his gun to go do it, so, you know, he can really retire at forty-one. And full benefits, you know, and now we're, and again, I'm not criticizing, I think that's awesome, and we, we're a great force. You know, thanks to you guys' time and investment, you know, I don't wanna take that away, but at forty-one, they can go out and they do it. It's great to see healthy faces out there that are retired to do it, that, that are out eating chicken wings, right? So I think that, you know, that's all, that's, we don't, we're not trying to take that away, either.
But a lot of the young force, and I, and you're right, PD is very young. A lot of them are probably still on their parents, under the ten and six rule, so they're not even paying health insurance.
But.
And, and it, it's not a big factor.
No, there, actually, there's, there's, there's less than you would think, but that being said. It, it is, it is, they're not doing it because it's selling anybody short, it's not a good thing. It is a good thing, I mean, it covers everything you have. And the, the bad part about it is a seven thousand dollar copay and a fourteen thousand dollar copay, that's the bad part. But we're covering that, and it's still cheaper for us to do that. But if we just did the, uh, we're, I think we're one point four, again, some of these numbers are off the top of my head, it's like one point four million. Just to do that, instead of two point eight.
Why didn't you bring this up earlier, like June, July? Why do you drop it on people in November?
Yeah, good question, and it's very frustrating to have to.
Because that's what the county did, to retirees, they dropped it on us in November.
Yeah.
There's a reason, I think there's a reason for that, the salesmen do it.
Well, it's, it's based on what are here to date, what our expenditures are, what we can try to do. That's when we're putting our budget together. I would love to say that I'm planning ahead and for the year two thousand twenty-seven. Although there is a lot of things we are, but there's many things that you, you know, it's, it's, we're trying to get through it as it is. We were hoping the consortium wouldn't go to eighteen percent. We were doing everything we could to do, fighting on as an executive member, trying to do it, I was a voice of one. Uh, and, you know, instead of funding, uh, it's, it's a hopeless hope, but it, it, so really, that's the reason. It wasn't, nobody's, you know, I, I did it, but again, if I gave you six months from now, and where's that gonna bring us?
Spanney comes around with their Medicare Advantage Plans early. We found out in the county, they were talking to the county in February, they dropped it on us in November. I expect Spanney was here sometime before October, talking to you about the plan.
That's not, it's actually October something, I would say.
It did October.
Yeah, October, October, you know, we were, we were almost past.
That's what they do, you know, but you're dropping it on everybody in November.
Understood, but the MS three, we've been working with for a year, and, uh, we've, like I said, had no issues with that. The bronze plan is just, we're trying to put our budget together, we have no other way to make, we're trying everything we can, this was the last thing I wanted to do. I trust me on that.
The, the, and I'll just, you know, I know it's not a dialogue here, but.
It is.
But the big things that the retirees I talked to is being forced into an advantage plan. I know you're gonna say it's a PPO and it's better and all that, that's not always true. If you read the Evidence of Coverage Book, where this advantage plan, and you put it next to them, real Medicare. Evidence of Coverage Book, you will see a difference. You'll see the difference in the pre-authorization issues. That's where the problem is, and that's where the people I talked to say, I don't want that.
Yep.
And I've already talked to one retiree in Florida, he says, he, he took it to them, they go, uh-uh, get out of here, we're not gonna take it. You got other retirees, and not all here in Portland.
Right.
And they're gonna be screwed over.
Two things with that, number one, they go to MS three plan, number two, is if they didn't want to, um. If they didn't get it covered, we just said in that resolution that we would take care of it. If it was covered under the blue, you all have to, all I have to do is show that. That's all, that's it, it's that simple.
Yeah, but that's not the same as a, a real Medicare card, you can go anywhere in the country, it's no problem, yeah.
With MS three, you can do that.
Right.
It's a MS three?
Sure, absolutely.
I never had any permission.
That's a supplement, that's a supplement to Medicare Advantage. It's a supplement to real.
Make sure that that's understood.
Supplement to real Medicare. Classic plan, or it's all classic blue and a MS.
That's a bad resolution.
So we're not throwing it down.
And MS three is the blue plan, but it doesn't save as much, there isn't as much dental, there is much hearing, so that, there's, there's change-offs to everything. We're not saying that's all they're in or nothing, we're saying, if, if you want the true match, it's MS three. If you wanna try to, you know, you're in network, call all your doctors, know what that's gonna be, I know what your future's gonna be. You could have, you know, throat surgery you need to have done, and you have to go to somebody different, and then they find out, well, I don't do that PPO. Then, then we, you have the option to go back to us, we pay for it, cuz it was covered under the blue. Or, you know, you know that you go to the MS three following year.
How, how much time do we have to make a decision on that MS three? Is, is it still the same time period? Do we have to make that decision quicker, if we wanna make that change?
It's the same December fifteenth, that, I don't, I don't know.
I'll double check the dates, and where are they, where are they going to get the MS three information? We've got it.
Information on that plan?
I'm sorry?
Will we get the information on that?
We, we have it, and we'll make sure that, we'll make sure that gets out, put it on the website, and make sure that there's the same. We'll do the same thing, we'll do the video this, next week, we'll do a video and put it out as well.
Is there an Evidence of Coverage Book for?
I sent it to you.
For that?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have it, okay.
Chief, but the letter says nothing about, it says you're getting pushed to this.
I apologize for the letter, chief.
Right, but that's legal. That, that legal, not, right, that says those, that's a notification that we're getting moved.
It was meant to be a notification of the timings of the meetings, is what it's meant to be.
Yeah, somebody, somebody, uh, what's the word, what's the AI? It was an AI, and it's like, so we, chief, would it make you feel better if we sent another one? Would it make you feel better if we sent another one, and just to make it, so it's clear, but I think we're making it clear.
It's a voluntary swap, any of these plans.
I asked to be sure people live in the meetings.
The, uh, MS three, first I've heard of it, sitting here at the center.
Yes, I apologize for that.
How many people?
But that's the point, chief, we tried to do it voluntary last year, we, all that information was sent to everybody, and we had nothing, no.
So nobody's signed up for MS?
Yeah.
Yeah, sixteen percent, sixteen percent are signed up for the proposal that you made two years ago. Yeah.
So now that's on the table for us now, so it's good to be, but he's on this information.
So I have, who has those resolutions? Pass them all to the council, so we can look at it, so I don't, you know, get it to whoever wants. Mr. Boer wants a copy of it, or whatever the case might be, if there's any language that anybody thinks is an issue or different, you do it.
The guy to go with the, on the board plan, is it gonna be an optional, or is there be no choice? MS three?
The MS three?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, do you know what you're, do you know what you're.
Plan four, uh, that's, you can choose the MS three or plan four, plan four is, I think is, is automatic. It's designed, unless you wanna do the plan three, the plan four is automatics.
I don't agree.
Yeah.
So I think you began, you listed this earlier, both, how would these savings of the period of five million be enacted? If we were to make it an optional transition for sixty-five retirees, do we have a sense for that?
So what would it cost us?
How much would reduce the savings? If we were to make it optional for those under sixty-five to switch to bronze, we have a sense for how that would shift this?
Agree your touch, please.
So, no, I don't, I, I, that's not one of the calculations I did. The, the calculations I did were based on moving everybody under sixty-five to bronze, and then varying percentages between the plan four. And the MS three plan.
And again, that's why the purpose of this meeting, so if the council wants to say, you know, what, what's the overall cost? What it'd cost us if we don't make this decision, I have that here, here's thirty-two point nine five percent increase. And what it would cost, or what it would cost to do, to change those out, I, I, you know, I mean, there's so many variations. It's like, I don't wanna spend ridiculous amount of time on something, that's, that's, you know, we try to plug in every scenario we could. Say, there's just such a big pool, that, that makes a big difference, you're talking a hundred times anything, it's thicker.
Right. Mayor?
Yes.
You consider current people receiving the insurance, leaving us alone. And, uh, make it apply to new retirees, uh, leave the city employment. Like we've done in other areas over the years, such as the retirement system, I started out as the tier one. Over time, the tiers increased, they might be up to six now. They didn't say to me, you gotta be number six, you're gonna be number six in the tier process. It gradually moved forward, capturing the new people who came out of force. Uh, as you know, I've been here for, paying this insurance for about fifty years. And it seems to me, I, like so many other people, have kinda settled into that, that level of insurance coverage without having to worry. But now, sitting here tonight, I hear about bringing up this MS three again. So now, do I need to decide about plan four, MS three?
Yes.
There's, there's another one.
That's it.
And MS three is for everybody that's sixty-five and old, that would be on Medicare Advantage.
No, that's not at all.
The advantage is the plan four, and the supplement is the MS three. And, and again, I, I would really research to think about the plan four, because. You have, you're being held, being held harmless, that if it wasn't be covered by the blues, you're gonna get it covered. And I know the concern, I'm not, I can't argue those concerns, but if they do happen, you're gonna be covered, it's gonna be covered in. And I, I, you could go. And I, I, you could go for that in that year, and if, if you felt like it was an issue. Then, then MS three, you could switch back to the MS three next year.
So, mayor, just explain to him that you added the, you added the plan four because it was more enticing. And it was better, and you had, you increased the budget by one percent, that's seventy-five grand, right?
Yes, right, so the reason we want the plan four, why it makes sense, and maybe why Mr. Millian was thinking about it. Is because the plan four gives, you know, there's, your, 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 your copays. Uh, is zero one one on your, on your, um, medicine, so if you have high expensive bills of medicine, like Chief Sandy was saying. For a hundred dollars a, a rack, you know, each power pill, I don't know what, what it was, but, you know, now you're zero one one, that's a big, that's a big plus. Then you're also getting, uh, I gotta remember names, five, five hundred dollars for um.
Dental.
Dental, so that, that covers two people's cleanings. And, you know, for the year twice, I think is what, what I, what I was getting numbers for. It covers hearing aids, another.
It depends on.
Three hundred, three hundred.
No, no, it depends on which, which, there's a couple different iterations of hearing once, depending on which.
On the three hundred.
It's more than that, the vision, vision was three hundred.
And then, vision, well, the vision was three, and vision is three hundred, and then there's an iteration of the.
The hearing aid was five hundred.
But it's better than the MS three gives you for that purpose, so you're getting a better, um. You know, you get, it's a better, it's a better idea, and it's actually what the county is going to, the sole thing they're going to. We decided that we would offer both, so that if, if people felt that that was a concern, or getting outside the coverage area. They're in Florida, whatever, I, I, I can't, I don't wanna get it, then we got it all covered, so, I really believe. The plan forward, where I would go, is the best bang for your buck, and you're gonna get, all you're gonna get, coverage, everything you need. But, and, and specifically ask the doctor to make sure they're all covered, and within that network, that seems pretty easy, that's a no brainer. Again, you could have the one offs, or whatever the case might be, but be surprised how much is really covered, and again, you have that safety net. That's why I would stay with the plan four, is they have the safety net, city's going to cover anything outside that cost.
Even for individuals that are sixty-five and older.
Hundred percent.
I'm gonna get one of these magic cards.
Yes.
No, not an H R A card, no.
No, we're gonna get it, get it for each card that outright, and you can have.
I, I'm also in that area.
Okay, I know who you are, because you push it all the time, so I had a question to answer.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, so if you do give a bill that's not paid, we just show up at your office and get it paid?
That's correct. We'll go through it together, we'll make sure it's, yes. Anybody else have any questions? Ben?
I would just say the county, the county did not go to that totally, they made it voluntary for the current retirees. They are not being forced in the Medicare Advantage, it's just a voluntary.
Right, I think the last thing I have is, um, I think we need to hear about this MS three plan from the consortium.
Okay.
Weeks that we did last year that we can get up quickly.
We'll get those up on the website quickly, uh, Andy, can you make sure that happens, so? We can have them back next week.
Yeah.
Make sure to.
See if they're available. For the MS four, I wrote that down, hold on, sorry, our MS three, sorry. So the, the. The MS three is one thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and thirty-one cents next year. And that's the supplemental.
That's the total cost, and then whatever.
And you're like, take your percentage off of that.
You give that number again, please.
One thousand two hundred seventeen and thirty-one cents.
A month.
Per month.
Per number.
But, but you only do.
Whatever your percentage is.
Yeah, so, because I know we range it from like eight to.
Twenty.
Twenty, and percentage.
I have a question, did anybody receive the side by side comparison from our classic blue and the, the plan four?
I've got a whole box of them downstairs, if you didn't have them, I've been trying to hand them out.
Out there for the information.
Yeah, and I said I would have them downstairs, and I've had them, and I've been handing them out to anybody who came by for them.
We can get it to you, we'll get it to you tonight if you give us.
Yeah, I can walk.
Chief, come on down, we can grab them now, we have them.
Do other people want them, I can grab a whole.
Yeah, just grab the box.
Okay, hold on, I'll be back.
Anybody else, so we need to make it, I think we get this, zoom, I'll send this. So, everybody have a copy of the resolution, Randall, we should pass that out.
Every council has it, yes.
I asked everybody to review this, who will do it, Mr. Bower, if you wanna review that. And anything that would make something feel safer in a litigation case, that would be something that would give you this, give somebody this land done. That would say that something wouldn't be covered, I'll entertain it.
Well, yeah, the whole problem is, again, Medicare Advantage preauthorization, that's the big, big problem.
And they don't have to pick the plan four. The MS three, doesn't have that, their choice, I'm not trying to, we're not trying to force, I, I, I think if I know it's better. There's a lot more there to add, there's probably that slight risk of the preapproval stuff, but there's preapproval to a lot of items now. Even the blue stuff, but I'm not, I don't want to get into those details, I don't know what they're gonna be, it's too specific.
These people haven't seen the evidence of coverage book for the MS, for the MS.
They're getting it right now, I think that's what it is, right?
No, they're just gonna get.
He's gonna get in the side by.
Gonna get the sales leader, I mean, these, these books are two hundred pages, they need to see the whole book. You know?
We can put those out on the city's web, so.
Okay, we'll make sure that's out, Andy, make sure that's out.
Each of the E O Cs have an amendment, and it's only a couple pages long. That goes along with it, because they don't update the whole E O C every time they, they make a change.
For Medicare, it makes a change every year.
Yeah, but Medicare doesn't have all those preauthorizations, they just, they don't, that's why people prefer it.
So that's the problem with the PPO, that's a concern with the PPO, understood.
And, and the network.
MS three doesn't, either one of them are in, because it's basically the blue with Medicare card. With the Medicare card, it covers everything the blue does.
No, I get it, it's, it's a supplemental to real Medicare, you know, I, I understand the concept.
But again, it saves everybody fifty percent more, which, it's eighty percent, not gonna be as big a deal as those. But it makes a difference.
Okay, so we need to do something with it. Zoom for the MS.
Yeah, they're gonna see, we'll get all that information on that one.
How would it all with litigation potentially impact the city budget process? There's a plan, there's, 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 there's. A lag, even if they take subsequent action, there's, it's a lawsuit or.
Yeah, so that, without no age.
Guys, you have questions, we're talking about it.
Tom, could you say again what you were gonna say?
I was asking you if we had a sense for how things would impact the firm's city budget standpoint? In the event of litigation, would that postpone timeframes at all, do we have a sense for that, or?
No, I mean, I, I don't know how that would, uh, again, I don't know where that would go as far as where that case would come down, as far as. Where are we, where are we missing the lines that need to be crossed, we're ensuring it, that's what this meeting's about.
I'd like to, but avoid this at any cost, better work this out, that's why I ran for these meetings.
And Beth, and everybody in this room, and everybody that's in the city, that's all we're trying to do.
I have one more question, there, there's money to cover the excess of my ten thousand dollar card, whatever it is. Is that gonna be a separate line in the budget, to set aside a hundred thousand dollars?
The, the H R A cards are only for people under sixty-five that move to the bronze plan, yes.
But yes, it will.
That is counted for in the budget, yes.
That is, that's, it isn't gonna be all, we don't have the money now.
No, no, it's in, it has to be in the budget.
We, we have to pay for that, like that is, uh, so as it's being expended, we get billed for it, it's immediate day. It immediately comes out of our account, it's tied to an open account. So if we can't, if that doesn't get paid, we get bigger bills, so it's, you know. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, so there, kind of the chief nickel's point, um, maybe June would be a little too much for the city, but certainly. Another couple of months wouldn't, same February. You need to talk about these a little bit more.
I, I, I will, I will look into that, but I, I'm pretty sure I understand the consortium's end, end of it, they're open, that's their open enrollment time period. So that would throw the MS three out, probably we could get Spanny to do something, I don't know, I, but I will have that conversation, just honestly say it is. Um, but again. I, I know it's hard to digest, and whether I give you thirty days or thirty months, I get it. And, and I don't wanna take that, add to that anxiety, but I also, you know, recognize, you got a two hundred page book to read. If that's the, the depth you wanna beat, or you wanna understand it as a generality. Uh, nobody, nobody really, I don't know who likes insurance, I don't know who likes accounting, but I don't, or being a lawyer, but whatever. Or mayor, for that matter, but, I, I don't know, uh.
Wants to be the mayor?
That drive that, who drives that? That point to be home, to make sure they're understanding, so I'd rather feel more comfortable that we get everything out we need. Give everybody what they need, get the education, this is a good side of it, and I think. We try to get everybody educated that way, and then see how they feel, but I promise you, I will look into that.
So when will the MS three information be up on the website?
It, it currently is, but from last year, so we'll have to refresh it, so it's easier to find, and everybody knows how to get. We'll, we'll make it.
And we'll put it on the front page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just so I have an understanding, so the difference between what we have now, if we went to MS three. It would be sim, same thing as far as Medicare, we have our Medicare, we go where we need to go, hospital, this or that. We get it, no problems. Instead of though, having secondary insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we have supplemental. Insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield, yes, I don't actually understand the difference between supplemental and secondary.
So let me try to understand, explain this to you, so you're, you're currently on the blue plan, right?
Yeah.
And so that, that's a full coverage, that's not, that you're getting a full coverage, you're paying for a full insurance coverage to cover you, if Medicare doesn't. It doesn't matter, if Medicare wasn't even there, we're paying for that full coverage, keep that coverage. Where the, where the supplemental kicks in is it'll cover you from, uh, the, let's make it up. Say Medicare covers eighty percent of all the medical costs that you're gonna have, and you might have something unique outside of that twenty percent. Then you're currently, your blue plan is kicking up to that last twenty percent, this supplemental does the same, it does the same thing. But we're, instead of buying it for a hundred percent, we're buying it for twenty percent, does that make more sense that way? So, we're currently, right now, um, we have a hundred percent coverage on our employees that are covered in the blue plan. And you're getting the same, even though Medicare's covering most of it, it just, it doesn't make sense to pay a hundred percent when we're only using twenty. And that's, and, and, and not on your back, but on the, on everybody, taxpayer's back, everybody else's back.
Right now, whatever Medicare doesn't cover, Blue Cross Blue Shield does, and vice versa.
Where they don't cover in and out, we're still doing.
Same thing.
With the MS three, it would do the same.
Same thing.
Correct, I would like to see that.
Okay, yeah, yes.
We'll have it on the website tomorrow, or.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Dan.
Does it cover prescriptions, yes.
With it, they would cover.
At a different rate.
It's zero, one and one.
It's like the, uh, plan four is zero, one and one, I think it's thirty-five, I'm gonna get this, thirty-five. Sixty.
I will get it, I will get it.
It's so high, it's like forty-five, fifty-five.
It's the same as classic.
It's the same as classic blue, what do you pay now?
So if you, whatever you pay now, you'd pay the same on MS.
Yeah, ten, twenty, five, forty.
Yes, that's it.
We can send, go to the same doctors we're always going to, and no one's gonna say, no, we don't take that.
No, no, all of the difference.
Now, MS three is the, exactly the same network, exact same payment schedule, exact same drug formulary. Still administered by Exelis, Blue Cross Blue Shield, through, still through the.
Consortium.
The consortium.
But, isn't as good a deal, Bruce.
Is the city going to make the evidence of coverage documents for all four of the plans that are currently being discussed, including the one we're currently under? So that we can review them?
I have all of them, Bruce, if you want, I'll email them all to you.
We have to put them all.
Yes, good point, Bruce, we'll put them up there, and you can, I know you'll learn out on it.
Provider, there, there's a link on the, the insurance back page for providers, it's a broken link.
Yeah.
Make sure these things work.
Where, where's the broken link?
On the frequently asked questions page, they said the link for to check providers is broke.
That must be on there, so, but we'll double check there, thanks for bringing that up, and we'll make sure all that's on that site.
And just one caveat on the E O Cs, the E O Cs for the metal plans, which is what the bronze would be under. It shows bronze, platinum, silver, and gold all in the same book, so there's four plans in that book, just so you don't get. That's the only one that's all grouped together, everything else is.
Yes.
One, one question, um, I know you keep saying you're not funding this on the back of the retirees. But like, for me, I, I turned in three hundred fifty-six days. For something I no longer need or use, are you planning on refunding some or more shit on those three hundred fifty-six days?
That arbitrary fictitious spreadsheet, you mean, is that what you're talking about?
Mr. Jones, what do you mean?
So, uh, so.
You're saying this is a cheaper plan for the city? And, and you're, you're offering something cheaper, and it's, it's something I've already paid for, I've already put money for. You know, I, I paid for a more expensive plan. Do you know what I'm saying, I, I paid for, I paid three hundred fifty days for an expensive plan, and now. Yeah, and now, the city says, well, it doesn't cost that much, it's cheaper for you, well, it seems as though, like, riding it on your backs of retirees. Because we put more money into this, do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I, I think so, let me try it, let me take a shot, so, um. So many years ago, just a little bit of history, and everybody knows it out there, but a little bit of history, so. The, the city at, at some point decided to create a big sick bag number, of eighteen days a year. Right, unheard of in, in the private world or private industry, huge benefit. And realistically, that was an arbitrary number that was put in there, not to expect somebody to take eighteen days. But to give you something instead of cash, to give you a benefit factor by the end of your term. To go towards, to incentivize you to go for twenty years and doing that, and, and many costs. And, and some difficulties the opposite way, I know one officer, I, I probably too much I said already. But there's one officer that had to go out for a pregnancy term, and, um, you know, had, asked to stay on two extra years. Because of that pregnancy term, kicked that back, so, you know, and so there's kind of that negative part, but it was an arbitrary. Number that was creating arbitrary value, that you started as a cadet, or a, a patrolman. And you, and I think you retired, retired as a, uh, lieutenant, or sergeant, sorry, sorry. So you started, you started as a patrolman, and, you know, make it up, you were making, you know, fifty thousand, then you retired as a sergeant. And you're making seventy-five thousand, now you're getting that, your hours based on a seventy-five thousand, not fifty thousand, so there's a huge. Significant increase there, and then you were given the option to cash out, which we did, I wrote checks out for eighty thousand dollars. And I, you know, uh, and to, um, for, for retirement, and again, that was not budgeted money. That was not money that was put in a bank account, all those years that, oh, none of that was ever put there, that was saddled on the back. Of us just as an arbitrary spreadsheet, you know what I mean, so, if that makes sense, so, then. Then we continued on with, with having to carry that burden of cashing people out, you know, you have three, four people retiring one year. Like, we're now, all of a sudden, we're at a quarter million dollars, you know, we gotta try to come up with that in savings in another area, so those are real life things that we're dealing with. But in the end, so like, then there's retirees that, I'm sure there's retirees in this room, that have expended that money. And, and God bless you, you gotta live a long time, you got a long ways to go, you know what I mean, and, uh, and you're gonna, you're gonna be using that. That your payout, and you're at eight percent, probably nine, I don't.
Sixteen.
Oh, you're at sixteen, so you're a later, you're, yeah, so you're at sixteen percent, so you're gonna, you know, that, it does, you know, you'll keep eroding at that sixteen percent. And you're not getting, you're, you're getting the bronze, you're getting the same, because you're under sixty-five, and you're really age twelve. Uh, but, uh, you're, so you're gonna get, you're gonna get that bronze plan, and you're not gonna have to make any copays. So your money, your cash in hand is gonna go farther, okay, and you're, you're gonna pay, you're gonna be less pulled out of your pool. At that sixteen percent than you would have before, so that'll last longer, and you'll be able to get for your full retirement. There's a lot of people I know that are in this room, that planned their retirement, and said, all right, I'm gonna cash out this much. I'm gonna keep this much in, cause that'll get me to Medicare age, and then I have the options to go with something different to do it, you know. You know, I, I, we had a person that was in finance, and everybody in this room, I think had dealt with her at some point, God bless her. But she, you know, she, she retired out, and could have went to the Medicare supplemental. Or advantage plan immediately after, and walked out with that in her, her thing, and left, you know, eighty thousand dollars in the bank. That she could have cashed out, and didn't live two months to see, so. I get it, but hopefully I answered your question, is, you know, in, in, in run, it's gonna give you sixteen percent for a longer period of time. Cause we're watching the cash on the other side, it's, it's less money out of your pocket, and I could look your name up and tell you what that less cash is out of your pocket. On an annual basis, just by moving to that bronze plan. Yes?
I have a question, all the money that, that the city employees banked. All those dollars, where's the money kept?
There's lots, it's, it's a fictitious spreadsheet, there, there was never money.
Fictitious.
I understand. I'm giving you an honest answer, that it was, it was, there was never a bank account that that money was put into.
Why not?
I can't answer that question.
We should've been asked.
I can't answer that question, I get it, I understand. Well, we're not, nobody's not holding it on, we're not holding it to be, but we're also trying to mitigate the cash that we have. You know, and, and quite frankly. You know, I'm, I'm dealing with a cash flow crisis now, you know what I mean, we, we, we are like, it's, and all the minutes palis are doing the same. And I'm not just talking to make you feel any better, but we're, we're, you know, it's, it's difficult, it's hot, it's extremely, extremely difficult. This isn't the seventies and the eighties and, you know, even the nineties where it was a lot easier, things are a lot harder now. Look at your costs of everything, eh, you know, our health insurance went up eighteen percent. You know, uh, you know, uh, all, all of the cost of groceries, they're twenty percent. You know, the landfill just sent us a message, oh, actually it fell out from reporter, thank you. Uh, uh, one of the reporters that the landfill just increased their cost sixteen percent to trash. So everybody's trash is like, so now we're trying to mitigate that, we're gonna pull the trash, we're gonna go out in county with our trash. Cause I get a haul and pull away there, so we're trying everything we can to manage them, but ultimately. It, for, for incompetent reasons, all that was unfunded, and we're trying to get out of that business.
Well, this is side by side. Um, this is an overview of proposed benefits, not a contract, so it really is.
I'm not sure what, what side by side is what?
It's like the brochure.
That's what I'll decide.
This is an overview of proposed benefits, not a contract.
Right.
Right, just because they're saying this.
Yeah, so there's a, that's like, that's what Mr. Gola was talking about, we're gonna put the two hundred page document, round numbers. Two hundred page document that you can go through and look at each one of the specific it is, they try to highlight those, those colored. Colorful spreadsheets that the salesman and salesperson, salespersons are selling. Are the highlights of what is the biggest impact. They, they don't always put in there the, uh, some of these other ones, like we talked about, the, uh. Standard sixty-five day for, um, rehab facility, they don't necessarily put that in. They don't do that, but that's why we're trying to drive into those levels.
And I know the salesman told us to, um, find out if our providers. Are in net worth with them, find out, we called the number in the booklet we got. And I called today, talked to, they transferred me three times, and the last person said, we can't give you that information unless you're a member. Well, I can't find out, that's what she told.
What would you call your doctor's office?
No, no, I called the number in the booklet that we got at the informational.
P S four.
Yep.
I'd, I'd bring her to school for the plan, she'd have to call her doctor and ask if they took that, not the other way around.
Right, so, yeah, so there, I guess, you have, usually what happens is. People would call their doctor. You would call it, your doctor and say.
They, they told me at the end, I'd have to either call my doctor or the city would give me that information, if there are factors in that plan.
Are they, okay.
We don't, in that.
We don't, oh, we do, there is, you know, like, that might be the broken link that Bruce was talking about, was it Bruce, is that?
On the phone.
Yeah, but we.
No, because it was.
Okay, so we, we, we don't, we don't, we wouldn't get, we don't know that information. You would have to either call your doctor to ask them if they take the Plan Four or the MS Three, which we know they take the MS Three, or the Plan Four, or. Uh, I, I think there's a link that Bruce was talking about that was broken on the website, that they have a link to do that. But you're not, you're, I don't know if you called the Plan Four people and, and asked them.
They, they won't give us that, yeah, cause we're not part of the plan.
So they won't give us that.
Right, you have to call your doctor, right?
Then why did the woman say that?
It's to give them the number.
Good question, my guess, uh, my understanding is we have to be a member, so they're probably assuming that we have members, and it's a reinformational meeting, I can't answer, that's my guess.
My, so when I take from this meeting that. All the input you got from tonight, from the employees that are here. And the employees, the retirees who are not here. You will make that decision amongst the council. On whether or not you're going with this or not going with this. With really no vote, no input, Joe, just from what you're hearing. You will make that decision on what's best for the city. And the retirees amongst the eight council people, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, when we, the MS three thing sounds interesting to me. If we saw that information and say, okay, that's acceptable. Then you have to start the whole process all over and you have to squash it in until December fifteenth or something like that?
You just, you just, you would give us notification to your MS three and it'll just happen.
It'll be part of.
You're already part of the consortium, you're already in our network, they just move everything over, it's that's.
And then if people don't accept that, they're gonna automatically go into the.
Yes.
Plan Four.
Cause I believe that's better.
It's Medicare advantage.
Well, they're gonna automatically.
Right.
Into it next week's meeting doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, it does, oh, yeah. Or, or, that's what we're talking about, she was just asking how it's proposed to, to go up toward.
So, if, for instance, somebody takes the, the MS three this year. Do they have an opportunity in one year to go back to the bronze?
No, then they would go to the Plan Four, they could go to the Plan Four.
Whatever you're, whatever you're saying, whatever. You have to know that this is not landing in anybody's head, you don't have papers, you don't have numbers, so forget about, I, I don't care about the chart. You've got two choices as I'm, as I'm understanding it, you can go to the MS three. Right, or you can find yourself in the middle of this. Like new one that you're recommended.
Plan Four.
What I'm asking is, let's say I go with MS three. Because I'm too confused about what I'm gonna run into. Next year, I decide, I hate this MS three, then can I, like the other? Is there another open enrollment which I can switch back over?
To Plan Four, yes.
Yes. Second part. Plan Four. Sucks worse than the MS three, and I go.
Yeah, back, back to the.
You hear about.
Yeah. Open enrollment, change back, yes.
But what you can't do is go back to Classic Blue, we endure it, cause that's a one way street, that's.
Well, but not, not enough of your actual Medicare.
The classic Medicare. Yep, the only way you can keep that is by going to the MS three.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, yeah, that's great.
So then that's, but that's different than what he just danced through.
No, no.
Well, you can go from MS three here.
Yeah.
Play.
Yeah, I can go back.
Yes, you can go back to MS three.
But would you, but you have to go through some hoops to get your Medicare back?
No, no, you're not really giving up your Medicare, it's just how the payments work.
Instead of Medicare, the P P O works, instead of Medicare becomes a partner in that P P O. Instead of them paying everything first and then the other one kicking in, they just, they, they go in and do, that's why, uh. That's why it's so much cheaper, because they have, there, there's less involvement, there's not two agencies reviewing every one of those accounts, it's all one, they said, we'll, we'll receive these. Medicare for you, you never lose your Medicare, we'll receive all these for you, we'll pay that house. And anything that's supplemental, all in the same check, all done, instead of Medicare paying theirs, and then the, then the supplemental. That's all right.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
And then, then the supplemental kicking it in.
Plan, Plan Four is a Medicare Advantage. Program is a run by a for-profit.
Right.
Private carrier.
Right.
Real Medicare, traditional Medicare, run by the government, not for profit. And that's where some of the problems come in.
And that, right, and you get some greedy people that create a Medicare Advantage plan that goes, doesn't work well and. Takes advantage of people and we're not gonna, we're not proposing that, but we're also giving you the advantage to say. And I shouldn't use the word advantage, we're giving you the possibility of using the MS three, which is the Classic Blue, that's just covering that twenty percent. Instead of covering a hundred percent, covering the twenty percent, not on anybody's back.
Uh, uh, I'll just say, we, we, we went through the Plan Four with the county, probably the same one.
It is exactly the same.
It had problems, okay, that's why.
Exactly the same one.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Well, only one thing that I can say for sure that I know. And I just did a quick Google. Um, but to A A R P that is nonpartisan and not interested in pushing us into a decision in two days. Um, and I'm not a retiree, so I am not affected by this decision. Medicare. Standard Medicare is free choice of your physicians anywhere in the country. All advantage plans renegotiate networks every year, and those things change. And you don't have any prediction over what.
And that, that, but let me clarify something real quick, also, the Classic Blue. With his Excellus, they also negotiate every year, so last year, no, it's always that.
Talking about that now, because I know what.
We are.
What, yes, but I'm not, I know what you want, we know what you want, okay, we know what you're asking, you're asking the choice between blue and, and copper or bronze. I'm just. Reiterating that. When people start getting into various advantage plans, whether it's blue, pink, copper, or whatever. The distinction between all of those, and what I can understand here. And Medicare is your option to go into where, you know, wherever you're living in this country. And who you can go to. To me, that's a big distinction. The dollar signs. Don't, don't excite me, because I know when it comes down to time for me to make a decision about my healthcare in the moment. I'm gonna be a lot better off if I can choose where I go.
Right, understood, recognized, but also the plans we're talking about changing them from. Is the blue plan, which they do negotiate those deals in there, it's not Medicare. But it kicks outside of that, so the supplemental covers. It is, is a truly a Medicare supplemental plan, so it does cover that. And that's.
Right.
So, I just wanna make sure.
We're just finding out now, tonight, that we haven't been, we're, we're not. We're just finding out tonight that there's this MS three thing, and really it's Medicare. Correct?
No.
So.
It's, it's a, so I'm glad you, I'm glad you're educating ourselves.
No, no.
I understand, yes.
Can I just say things and you can say if I'm correct in, because I've been taking notes, and I just wanna make sure I have things correct.
Okay.
Okay, so currently you're moving off of the Shield Plan, which is negotiated every single year, like all of the plans. The only difference between the Blue Plan and the Bronze Plan, which is Plan Four, correct? No, no, no. Okay. Okay.
If you want, Sydney, if you wanna talk with me afterwards, I can make sure.
What, what's the difference between Plan Four, what's Plan Four?
Plan Four is a Medicare Advantage, it only applies to people who are over sixty-five, they have to already be on Medicare Part A and B. And it is a Medicare Advantage with prescription drug P P O.
Okay, does that differ, um, in what ways does that differ from the literally?
So, if then, yeah, talk to me afterwards, cause otherwise we're gonna waste a lot of time, so I, I, I'll make sure I give you all the documentation.
I just wanna get respective, it's time to go.
You say you're gonna think funny, how the city's one paper stuff that doesn't cover. From a lot of that's on, run a little low, you can't pay mine. Or you do that, and number two, what guarantee we, do we have that you will actually do that?
Well, number one, you'll be given that card and that, it, it automatically pull it out of our account. Number two, uh, there's no guarantee that we're gonna pay your insurance premium now, if you're asked the same question. Kind of harsh answer, but if, 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 if we didn't have the funds to pay that, we're not gonna have the funds to pay that, so it's, it's the same. So if everybody used all their deductibles. In the bronze plan, it's still less money for the city than paying for the blue. Because the plan's that much cheaper. And then we're also banking on the fact that a lot of people are gonna be healthy and not use all their seven thousand or fourteen thousand dollars. And that would be money back, help fund the other aspects of us, part of our city governance, does that make sense? So, I'll try to say it one more, another way, um. So if, if. So we, we have to fund it, so basically how, how the, the plan works, and I know, uh, for the, the card that you were deductible. It, it actually ties right to our bank account, we have to give them our bank account number. And when you go to. Go to the drugstore or go to the doctors and you pay your copay, I didn't know what that is, fifty dollars. Say you go and make your copay for fifty dollars, you give them that card, that fifty dollars goes off of that, immediately hits our bank account. Okay, it hits a management company, they look at it, first, yep, and then it pulls right out of our account, all done. Over that account's dry, we got bigger problems.
But when you're on Medicare, you can't have an H R A card.
Correct.
That's illegal, so, so the card you're talking about, where you.
That's correct, that card is only for the active under sixty-five.
Right, right.
That's only for the active under sixty-five.
I think what. So what Mike's talking about is, you know, if you're, if you're on this Plan Four. And you can't have an H R A card, and then you come into some big expenditure, and the city says. Ah, that pot ran dry, we can't pay.
No, well, that's.
I think that's, that, that.
That, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, then you've got a legal case that, I'm sure that there's attorneys in the front row that would be mad. Like that's, that's. I, we're, we're not that broochy, I think.
You're saying that you want us off the Classic Blue, because there's not gonna be enough money to. Pay for your, your part of the insurance.
Yes, so, it's, you, all right, I'm gonna put you in my, I'm gonna put you in our shoes. We have three point nine million dollars, if we have to spend, if we keep everybody on Classic Blue, they could change, right now, three point nine million. Okay, we're gonna do that, and twenty percent of, of everybody over sixty-five that's in this room that's over sixty-five. Twenty percent is all you're really touching on that hundred percent premium that we're paying every month. Like if you were doing that, and you're private, we're, I'm, I'm trying to come up with analogies, cause a lot of great at that, but if you had an analogy, you, you, you're not gonna, you're not gonna expend that. We're going shirts fund. I mean, a, and we're, we're doing some, we're trying to pay for something that may not even, that's just like, not even remotely possible, so. If there's another plan out there, which is the supplemental, what it does. That covers all of anything that's above your Medicare, cause Medicare's gonna pay all that, anything above that, it's gonna pay that, wh- why wouldn't you save three million dollars and do that?
Probably because they had a contract, they gave up all their six.
We're not taking that away, I'm still giving them the coverage, did your contract say that I had to spend? Three point nine million dollars on the same thing, that they're gonna get covered in another way?
No, there are no figures in the contract, which is what they.
Okay, right, but the, did this, it didn't say in there that I needed to spend more money, just. Save money. I don't know, I go back to my father, my Cadillac, and his windshield wiper motor went, I replaced it, I got a Buick. It was half the price of that, it was the same wiper motor, exact same number, exact same car. But just because it was a Cadillac didn't make it any better, and that's a, that's a. You know, that's the best analogy I can give you there, but just because we're doing that, it's not like we're trying to take your money, you know, Johnson's money away. From that was just set aside that you worked hard for, the eighty thousand dollars you put away to pay for your premiums, it's gonna go farther, there's people that are outliving. And they actually have to send us a check every. And, uh, if this gets away from that and helps them, benefits them, that's a, I, I think that's a win-win. And if it, if it benefits us and makes us more sustainable, cause otherwise we let it go. We're, we're, we're done, controller comes in and says, all contracts null and void, doesn't matter what it's in, everybody's paying twenty percent. Not asking for anything like that, nobody's trying to do anything like that, we're just trying to be. Just pretty sure irresponsible for what our positions are, and I think this, this does that, and I. I promise you, you will not get hurt, I promise you, nobody's gonna get burned.
Yeah, right.
I, I, my word means something to me.
Uh, I asked a question of Ms. Greenwood, could she repeat the answer that I asked you last week when I came to one of the. My premium is a hundred and forty dollars, I pay ten percent of my insurance per month. And you were able to look that up and say what my installment per month would be?
Yeah, it's, so it'd still be the ten percent, so.
Could you, could you repeat the people here, what I would be paying.
So.
Monthly instead of the hundred and forty dollars.
So, next year, if you are on an individual Classic Blue and you pay ten percent, you would pay a hundred and sixty-four dollars a month. Next year. If you were on an MS three plan, and you paid ten percent, you would pay. A hundred and twenty-one dollars. And if you were on Plan Four and you paid ten percent, you would pay fifty-eight dollars. Sorry, mental math, I believe it was ten.
I went to the meeting and what she said, my premiums would go down to. And the thing that I said last week when she was there was, because I've been on Blue Cross Blue Shield, Excellus. Did it sound like a no-brainer to me? Okay, when I listened to what she talked to the three of us last week and asked questions. It sounded like top night or wrong. And listening to tonight. And listening to tonight. It seems like there are ways I can go wrong.
Yes.
Because I said this once before over the last three years, that when we were negotiating two years ago with Aetna. I was quoted in the newspaper and saying, why shouldn't I go with this? Well, after listening to more people and more, I did not go with it, because at the time, we were gonna save fourteen thousand dollars. For employee that switched over, that was the city's caveat to say. For every retired employee that switched over, the city would save fourteen thousand dollars. I don't hear that this time, there's obviously savings, but I didn't hear a figure of how much each employee, cause. This is opt-in, we don't have a chance to stay out of this, before we were able to get out of it, if we wanted to, and I opted not to go in. So this time, everybody's gonna be in, and the city's gonna save three million dollars. If I'm listening to what you told me last.
I called, I called and found out what our premium would be under classic blue, when it's only like fifty dollars more. For next year, and we're very happy with classic blue. Extremely happy.
I've had extremely good luck with the insurance I've had since I've been retired. I've had two new hips, I didn't pay anything. I guess I'm just kind of. It just sounds too good to be true, but I was convinced at the last meeting that it sounds like a good deal, so I I really don't know. How are we vote right now, we don't have a vote, like I asked, who's gonna vote for this, the common council is gonna vote for this, they're gonna determine what we go on. I guess, often tonight, they've heard a lot of back, you know, input. Not from everybody that's on this, obvi- obviously, everybody's not here, and whether or not we have to make a, they have to make a decision by. Sometime in the middle of December, uh, I just gotta say that I hope they make the right decision. By what we have been giving them tonight, and I hope that the input tonight has helped them make a decision that's gonna be fair to all the retirees. Okay. Off that, I have, I've reached out to a couple of different unions that I have contacts with, actually I have contacts with all of them, but I reached out to two of them. And their unions are not happy with the bronze plan and the plan four, they have not agreed to it.
Okay, our union?
Yes, city union.
Oh, yeah.
And that's just two, two that I've reached out to, I can reach out to the rest. The only one I know that has even closely gone for it is the PPA.
Okay.
Um, we're going away this winter. Uh, you know, it's not out of the country, but it's definitely out of this area, and. We're gonna be on the bronze plan, cause I. And I just wanna make sure that those cards work, no matter where you're.
Same network as you have right now.
How about specialists, the specialist thing, like, is is there, if if you get denied treatment. Is, is that a scenario that's gonna happen?
No, I don't think anybody would, can ever deny a treatment, especially if you're in an emergency situation, if it's not a network, they're they're still covered.
What if, what if they suspect, like you've got an issue, God forbid, you you know, they think you have a lung injury, they think it might be cancer. And you have to have a specialist, is, is there a scenario where they could, you know, push that off and deny the claim? And say, you know, we're not gonna cover that unless you go, you know, here or there. You know, I mean, I just.
Yes, it's the same cover, same as what you have now, it's the same cap, coverage, same network, same providers. So there's people they have negotiated network pricing with, and then there's some that they have outside of network. And that's where your, your costs might kick in and have to pay for those extra costs. So if you have to pay those extra costs, then that money's, that's what that card, card is for, the other card. Katie's texting me about something. That provider like is fixed.
Yes.
Eric, can we give an idea when this resolution's gonna come to the floor? I mean, I I think we should bring it to the next meeting, we, we have contracts to nego- that are negotiated, that have ratified, that have been ratified by the unions. That, um, so we we need to put that forward, and if not, we're gonna have to make some adjustments. We have to figure out where that three point nine million went from. But you're looking at, what, what's the date, you're talking?
The eighteenth.
The eighteenth, the resolution's gonna be for the eighteenth. And again, we open up to any kind of conversations, concerns, or otherwise, again. The reason I could assure you that it's gonna be done, cause this resolution at the council will bone some of that. Does exactly that, covers anything in and of, that that would have been covered in the blue that it wasn't. And I'm sure other municipalities have done the same, to get the same concern, and they've not had to use it. But this is us, and we're gonna live where we are and do the right thing.
That that guarantee is for both places.
That's correct.
Brands in the board.
That's correct, yeah. But the, it's for all three plans, yes.
Both plans will remain with the top of this county consortium.
Uh, MS three, is that right? Yeah, okay, and bronze.
And bronze.
And for us, and the spani is, which is the New York one, is the Advantage Plan four, which is for plan four, correct? Yep.
And the city's going to manage this?
Uh, we hire, no, the consortium ha- handles those two, which we just talked about, the MS three and the bronze, the the consortium manages them. And spani handles the MS, or the plan four, sorry, or plan four, and we have a, our.
Contractor for the H, HRA card.
For the HRA card, which are currently the same company that's handling our.
FSA.
FSA, so our flex savings accounts that's managed, if some people took advantage of those, it's the same company that's managing that.
So if I have a concern, I apply to, I have a MRI or something, and I'm turned down. Do I appeal it through the city or through the?
Well, I think, typically with with your carrier, you do the same, so if you're on the MS four. Would go three, MS three.
Four.
I'm I'm tired, you know, or the plan four, then you would just go through them, and then if you don't get to the cause, and we know it was covered under the blue, then you bring it here.
And regardless of which plan you're under, the third-party administrator is Excelus Blue Cross Blue Shield. So you'd be appealing at the same spot either way. They're all, they're all Excelus Blue Cross Blue Shield.
So, so what you're saying, if you vote for the MRI, you mean MRI is denied under plan four. That's denied, you bring it here, and you're a paper, everyone.
If it's covered under the blue plan, yes, it's the same thing, I can't imagine, but yes, a hundred percent, yes.
So.
That's how confident we are that it's not gonna happen.
How confident? That that, that you mean guarantee.
Oh, that's right, I, I, I guaranteeing it, but I have to give, cause no matter what I say, I have police officers in here. You know, and they could unload every gun they have, and then they're gonna go for their knife, and then they're gonna take the shoe off. And they'll get you the shoe, and then they're gonna get their shoelace, they, I cannot outthink that. So the only way I can outthink it is to put a blanket umbrella on a whole thing, that's why I have umbrella insurance. Like, you can't guarantee anything's gonna cover all, so that, in my own.